I think that's straight if it's not I apologize Turn off the light here Why do I feel like sorry I'm gonna cover you guys for a second but I feel like They're like cameras Alright that didn't help at all 안녕하세요 Hey something welcome back you'd be so proud I got like A thousand shares yesterday It was crazy Dom yes Dom started Dom started it all and then they just was a trickle effect thank you so much Sorry I'm trying to adjust the camera then we should be good 안녕하세요 How's everybody doing? How's your day been so far? Or your evening? Hey Shaylin Hey Patty Milo thank you so much oh we're getting to the oh yeah the What was the likes goal for today um someone said To try and get over cuz I haven't had more than fifty likes before So I think that's the goal for today I don't think I can actually like pin that or anything but yeah Hello welcome back to my shares How I always oh that's good Welcome back Aubrey I had volleyball trials today oh cool how did it go? I suck that volleyball the volleyball always like Hit my face I have a funny story about that actually Husky blue eyes welcome back The goal of the likes goal someone had said yesterday was Above fifty K So if we can get above fifty K today that would be my Record like I haven't gotten above that before Just like with the shares that was my record amount of shares was a thousand thank you guys so much for that Hi Kes go to sleep Kes okay Thank you Gabby for sharing Um what was I gonna say oh yeah volleyball so just a brief story Before we begin um for volleyball I was in a club volleyball club And we would have this practice where we'd spike the ball so that our coach would Like push the ball up towards the you know The ceiling or whatever just like And then the goal was to spike it so when it got to my turn like we were all in a line Do 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 and everyone's just spiking next girl spiking next girl spiking When it got to me the ball would drop and then like hit my face and then we would have to start over So it was always my fault like I sucked that volleyball okay One K already had two K thank you so much For the past two hours Keep trying I'm getting yeah yeah I hit my face So as long as that hasn't happened to you just think about me anytime there's an embarrassing moment With volleyball okay Alrighty I've fallen on my face No Patty I'm so sorry Yeah just think about me and Patty the next time you go for Tryouts okay Alright so let's go ahead and get started those of you who are new feel free to go ahead and give me a follow if you're a newbie or beginner in Korean If this is your first time here please comment FYP if I showed up On your FYP page At my first Korean class this morning that's cool Is it Davina? That's awesome how did it go? Most beautiful humans oh thanks Kes you're so sweet I'm in your discord yes Yes you are Both physically and mentally oh thank you Okay Leanne Thank you so much for joining Davina okay Davina Nice to meet you Thanks for joining the live yes keep sharing keep commenting and liking So let's go ahead and get started everyone's ready we're ready Okay so our first word 선생님 선생님 Hey Emily 안녕하세요 I know that one Teacher 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 confused me it looks so uh took me so long to figure out Oh I'm so sorry Sorry to tell you kids But yes this is teacher woo It's kinda thick Let's try that again oops what in the world okay Teacher can everyone see that? Eighty seven people hello if you're new feel free to go ahead and give me a follow especially if you're learning Korean if you're a newbie or beginner This is the place for you if you are not You can stick around for refreshers okay Now we've talked about our particles the other day which particle is this? Subject object or topic particle Amy and and thank you so much for the follow Thank you Dom and something for the likes Dom for the shares Emily thank you too We got one for Two for topic One for object marker any other guesses for I don't remember that's okay Did you pronounce teacher again 선선 생님 So you have a choice between Topic particle Subject particle Oh yeah or object particle Those are your three choices There's quite a few more but it's okay Some are saying subject topic Ah 선생님을 that's how far we gotten Okay we gotta mixture topic Subject objects Topic so Is actually Object particle There are two And That's okay reading and writing comes with time Yeah this means teacher 선생님 teacher But we're talking about the object particle here Very good Next part oops Try to erase So 만납니다 만납니다 Which comes from the verb to what? So 를 is when it ends in a vowel We have 음 a consonant so that's why we're using 를 here To to meet That is right it comes from the verb 만나다 Which is to meet To meet somebody to meet a friend Things like that Very good very good thank you so much for we're almost at six K likes we already have a hundred and seventy six shares Dom And those of you who have been sharing thank you so much Alright so 선생님을 And we're just gonna create an imaginative I over here so I teacher meet how do we arrange this rearrange this To make more sense in English I teacher meet Emily thank you for the shares Two hundred I don't know how you guys get that high so quick Thank you for six K likes too Also the gift goal for today I decided to go big or go home Is the money gun thing I it just looked cool to me but I was like I just want one of those I meet teacher very good so I I'm gonna go ahead and erase this Feel free to take a screenshot if you can if TikTok does not allow you then that means must mean you got the update So I apologize for that even though it's not my fault Uh but take a screenshot of this if you wanted for your notes I'm gonna erase it Then drop an apple emoji once you guys are ready And I'll put the translation up above but yes very good I meet the teacher or I meet my teacher Hey Jewel Little old me thank you so much for the follow Wise guy hello lilac thank you for the likes Kayla thank you for the likes Yeah apparently there was an update with TikTok where you can't take screenshots now but it's okay 사과 apple yes very good Megan hello thank you for the likes good to see you again Jewel good to see you too Yeah it might not let you do that but it's okay I do have a YouTube um it's linked in my bio Um so I upload these lives Usually the next day if I'm not working Um but I do upload them on there if you can't stay Hello Good to see you again so I'm gonna go ahead and erase this if you guys had any questions about What Patty thank you for the money gun Oh my gosh dreams do really come true thank you so much I meet Teacher Thank you so much it didn't send me um Confirmation thing oh there we go It says set up a new goal Oh I can make a new goal oh hand hearts okay Sure let's do that Thank you so much for the money gun Is the my implied yes you can say my or The teacher But we're assuming if we're meeting a teacher then it must be Um I'll keep my here Or It must be ours How can you read this so 선생님을 만납니다 선생님을 만납니다 Thank you so much for the follow I have a question I might have an answer Feel free to go ahead and ask thank you so much for the shares and for the Thank you for the chocolates strawberries I actually really like chocolate covered strawberry so I appreciate it Now I'm hungry thank you so much You always drop gifts before you go and I appreciate that 공부 I love you Emily oh thank you for For the heart me uh is 를 pronounced with uh so 를 is Pronounced 를 With an L at the end Study study yes this is study very good So yeah when this character is at the bottom it makes an L sound Very good very good question I'm sure other people have that same thing in mind so I appreciate you asking Alright so we have the blank particle again Similar they're both the same particle this one and this one It's just we use one over the other in certain situations So which particle is this? Good night SuJong lots of love have fun I'm not sick oh no I'm so sorry to hear that drink a lot of fluid Uh make sure to in order to not lose your smell that you're like smelling a lot of things throughout the day too Like your soap and stuff like that I know that sounds weird but yeah But yes take care I've had it once so if you need some advice just message me and I hope But have a good one thanks for stopping by yes it is the object particle so with this one We're using this one because it ends the word before it ends in a vowel 우 Which I write two Os for 우 But this sound is a vowel sound Okay this one for 를 선생님 ends with a 음 sound the miaum Which is considered a consonant sound So that's why we're using 를 here versus 를 Ten K oh my gosh you're already at eleven and three hundred and fifty two Oh I'm scared thank you so much you guys are like Working together To like get all these different I Right now I'm just so overwhelmed by your love So with 를 It's like R U L 를 So 를 versus 를 Alright next up we have our meet of the sentence which in Korean again comes at the end the verb 함니타 which is to what? Comes from to what? Thank you so much for the shares and the comments thank you so much for the likes as well To do That is correct 하다 To do some of you guys might be used to 해요 It is the same thing 해요 and 함니타 are the same thing As far as the tense they're both present tense Thank you Dom for the shares star hello I'm sorry if I missed you like coming in but it's good to see you too Very good so study do so in Korean you can combine these two Or you can separate them Ultimately it just means I study So it's just study The verb to study to do studying to To study Okay Once you guys are good on these notes you can take your screenshots if you can Uh but just send an apple emoji once you guys are good to go And we can look at our answer options next To actively be studying yeah To do it Just to do it just do it 그냥 해 just do it Apple 사과 Ashley thank you so much for the follow yes those of you are new feel free to go ahead and give me a follow I keep forgetting to mention that If you're a newbie or beginner in Korean that is the content that I cover Um if you are further along than that then maybe you can stay for a refresher But I do just help newbies and beginners with All this stuff Korean songs to help with your pronunciation that's good Um I will say if you're like shadowing them like Trying to listen to how they sing a word And then repeat after them and correct yourself that way Um just be careful with that because with songs just like with singing We might pronounce things a different way just to make it sound good or to carry a note longer We might adjust the way that it sounds Or how it's pronounced so just um be careful with that yeah Yeah dramas are a good one podcasts too youtubers too Elizabeth thank you so much for the follow so it looks like we're good Is this a part of a book notes a PDF From topicguide.com Alright so I study So yeah I have I meet my teacher And I study Pretty simple enough Let me erase this Alright so let's take a look at our answer options so those of you who are new We're looking at these two sentences and then our answer option has to best Fit the sentence of or sentences above or our story above So we're gonna figure out which one best fits so 학교 what is 학교 in Korean? 학교 Dom thank you for this shares four hundred and fifty three And we're not even halfway through the live yet thank you And we're already at sixteen K so yeah the goal is to get to past fifty guys Just let you know someone mentioned that last live I don't know if they're in here from yesterday But the goal was to get above that To beat my Record I guess of Forty Or is it sixty are we trying to get to sixty or fifty I don't even remember but yes just keep liking keep liking Okay 요일 what is 요일? 요일 Priscilla okay I see you You must been taking them good notes You're in here regularly so You probably got all the vocab 워닝 와니 thank you so much for sharing the live But yes day of the week Alright we're used to seeing like 화요일 수요일 So when we take away that beginning part it's just the day of the week 요일 Alright 트위니 What is 트위니? Thank you so much for the shares Five hundred and sixteen oh my goodness What in the world I'm actually very excited That one chick we got one for hobby okay any other guesses for 트위니? Some of you might be looking in your dictionaries and that's perfectly fine as well Some of you might be taking a wild guess that's A okay as well If you're gonna take a guess though you just have to say it with your chest So we don't do question marks here So if you comment a question mark I'm gonna point it out and tell you to put it in all caps Or put an exclamation point Cute okay That's what you're guessing it is hobby So for those of you who are like oh I didn't know that one feel free to go ahead and write it down Before I move on to the next one 하나 둘셋 okay Hopefully you got that 날짜 날짜 What is 날짜? Date you trying to take me on a date man? I see you And is that a question mark that I see? Oh you didn't know that's fine no question marks yes jams hello Busted I don't know this one that's okay any other guesses 날짜 Hello help sorry I forgot Date night Yes 날자 Date Right this is something that you would see on the top of the paper next to Eden So Eden dot dot and then you put your name on the little worksheet and then you'll see 날짜 right next to it And you'd put the date At the top of your worksheet for school alright Very good Alright so out of our options here One school two day of the week three hobby or four date Which one best goes with our sentences above what are we talking about here? Are we talking about school are we talking about days of the week are we talking about hobbies? Or are we talking about A date a particular date One I see a lot of ones 학교 하나 One Dom thank you so much for all the shares you got us to five hundred and eighty seven Along with others who are sharing I just happen to see Dom most often But thank you guys so much thank you star Eden for all the likes you guys are doing it up Gabby Moon thank you Alright so it looks like we're going with this one So the answer key for this worksheet Is very wonky but let's just go ahead and look over the ones that we did previously So I am Kim Min Soo this person is James are we talking about names yes we are so Gonna go ahead and give you guys a checkmark on that one That one is correct thirty two I eat It's delicious which one are we talking about here we're talking about food I'll give you guys that one that's a checkmark on that Thank you so much for the follows Minggy thank you so much for the follow And then for the last one thirty three Um school would be the one Does it mean both go out on a date and calendar date no go on a date is just dated Like literally like the Conglish Word for date Um so date in a Korean accent would be dated And then 날짜 would be just like a date like August twenty second you know Luna hello Thank you for sharing the live yes Me too no worries if you're late it's okay Send some likes if you're late you have to send lights that's all Alright let's go ahead and move on to the next parts This may or may not be our last one for today we shall see what the time is looking like We're already halfway through our live So let's go ahead so 선 Let's just take a look at that 선 what is 선 It not from eighties What is 선 I was about to say that yeah of course of course Is that a que please tell me I don't see a question mark somebody Please tell me I don't see a question mark yes It is mountain and not from eighties Yes mountain Julie thank you so much for The follow I love getting new people those of you who can stay if you have a discord I do have a discord linked In my bio so feel free to check that out on my page And join we're looking for some new folks so please um Join and kind of bring your energy with you so 를 which particle is this again cuz you know I love to quiz you on this Possibly Oh thank you for hyping up the discord Guess we've talked about this particle yes yes Is it destiny hello Welcome back yes object particle very good Again pop quiz 를 is one what is the other object particle? What is the other object particle I know you guys know this I know you guys know this you're very smart What is the other object particle? I know you guys know this. I know you guys know this. You're very smart. That's right. That's right. Sunki, Sunki wife. Thank you so much for the follow. Very good. Let's go ahead and move on to the next part. Soha hamnida. Soha hamnida. Soha hamnida, which comes from to what? To what? Erica, one for like. Thank you so much for the share. Seven hundred and eighty-three shares. My gosh, and twenty, already at twenty-four. You guys are almost there. You can do it. You're more than halfway there, guys, on the likes. I have faith in you. To like, yes, to like. Those of you who have joined my previous lives, so we have Soha hamnida. What is just Soha yo? What is that? That's to what? What's after like? Oh, we haven't gotten to that. To, to like after? Maybe I don't know. I don't know the question. To be good. To be good, yes. Oh, is it a song? I'm sorry. Okay. So yes. The difference. Soha Hada is to like versus just oops, wow, I really treated that like an H. Tota is to be good. So there's difference for saying you like something versus for something to be good. Hamnida is to do. To do. Comes from Hada. And of course, you know, Korean sometimes doesn't make sense, but to do and to be good apparently means to like when you put them together. And therefore it becomes to like versus to be good. Any questions on that? Is everyone good? I'm gonna zoom out a little bit, take your screenshot and then send an apple if you're good. But if you have questions, feel free to comment them. You're a good teacher. Oh, thanks, Tia. I appreciate you joining the live. Yes, those of you who are new. What's San there? So mountain and then it's just telling us this is the object. So this doesn't have any meaning, but San means mountain. I see some apples, okay? How do we know what particle to use? So the word I isn't here. It's disappeared into the abyss outside of the box. Um, then San there, Soha hamnida. So San there, mountains, like. I, mountain, mountains, you can put what it asks, like, I what? So if we have an imaginary I out here and we say I mountains like, what is our sentence saying? Yes, it'd be Sanne, Sanne, Soha hamnida. I think our goal is fifty? What's this difference between Soha yo and Soha heyo? So yeah, before, so it is I like mountains, so we'll put that up there. And the reason we know to use the object particle for mountains is because the object answers what is it that we are liking? What is it that we like? We like mountains. So therefore you'd use the object particle with that. So the difference between Soha yo briefly. Soha yo and Soha heyo. Okay. This one is again coming from to be good. And this one's coming from to like. Different vibe. Start there. This is if you want to say something like BTS songs are good versus be, I like BTS songs. There's a difference. BTS songs are good. You'd use Soha yo. I like BTS songs. You'd use Soha heyo. If you wanna say mom's pies are good, Soha yo. If you wanna say I like mom's pies, Soha heyo. Hello to the ninety people that are in here. If you're new, feel free to go ahead and give me a follow, comment, FYP, if you're new, so I can say hello. Hopefully this makes sense. Is this good? For those of you who had that question. Jennifer, thank you for the follow. FYP, Asia? Hello, Sia? Hello? So Soha hamnida versus Soha heyo is just a difference in formality. So this one's super formal versus just being polite. So this one you would use with the president, your boss, etc. This one you would use with strangers. Um, you can use this one with strangers too. It's just, this one shows more respect than that one, but this one is still respectful. So it's just a difference in formalities. How long did it take me to learn? Hangul? A month. I broke it down. I'm young, I'm pickles. You can learn. You can do it. So yeah, just a different formalities is what makes it different from each other. Nothing super special. Alright, let's go ahead back to our sentence. Kudesa. Kudesa. Kudesa? Igo mae yo? Kudesa? We're almost at forty K and almost at a thousand shares. Thank you so much. So, so, does it mean and? So, Esco Eden, I love that. Thank you for the exclamation point. See, even with the exclamation point there, I know you guys mean a question mark, but I'm not seeing it, so I appreciate that. So, yes, so slash therefore is correct. Any questions on that one? Yes, Eden, kuri go and. So kudesa? Therefore, what? Dung San ne. Okay, there's a blank. Okay, cool. Dung? Where's it done? Dung san? It's kind of faded there. Climbing, I thought kudam was so. Kudam is like then? Hike, yeah. And then we have our particle again here. They love using this one today. Which particle is this? Which particle is this? Hanah. Dool, thank you so much for the follow. Sorry, guys. I'm just in the middle of updating something real quick. But yes, o- object particle is that all what we're guessing? And then again, Eul is the other, is the object particle we're looking at now? What is the other one? What is the other one? Like, climb, someone said, right? Earlier, sorry, I meant to put that here. Oops. Ah, dool, very good. Yes, this one. Oh, did someone have a question about that? Yeah, dung? Yeah, I know, it's very close together. But it is dung san. That's what it's supposed to look like. I'm not sure if they tried to put a little thingy above the O shaped c- um, letter, the Ian, but I don't know. Okay, we have our blank. I know, I thought it was ood. Li No, is it Lissy? Lissy? Thank you so much for subbing. That means we've reached our goal, but it still says four out of five unless I'm not, unless it's delayed. And then our next part, hamnida. Which is to what? To what? Comes from to what? To what, to what, to what? One K shares. Thank you so much. Almost at forty. We're trying to get to fifty. You guys are working really hard. To do. Is that a question mark I see, Kayla? Is that a question mark? But it is to do. Hada to do. Oops. Of course. No. It's, yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I thought I saw. Okay. Again, hamnida and heyo are the same. It's the same thing, just different formalities. This one's polite. And this one is just formal. Think of your like what is it, um? Your black and white events where it's like black tie? You know, super formal. You got your suit and tuxedo on versus just like I wanna say, this obviously isn't casual. I'm trying to like compare it to like clothes. Alright. All good there. So therefore, climb, hike to do blank, climb, hike, therefore, so. These two you could probably put together, but obviously there's a word that goes here in the middle that they're trying to put emphasis on, which we're about to figure out in a minute. So please don't jump ahead or try to answer anything because we're gonna go with the answers together, okay? Alright, our first runner up, Ta-tu. What is the meaning of Ta-tu? Oh, before it's on my button? Oh my gosh, really? We're almost at fifty? Press the screen. Yeah, you guys are breaking your fingers. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the likes. You guys are doing wonderful often. I know some of you guys are like, I can't comment and like at the same time. This is hard. Alrights. Seye. We're almost there, guys. We're almost there. We're almost at the finish line. Oh, I see. Okay, first tomorrow, most always. Always. Seye, the name, yes. Weekends. I can't. Is that a question mark? I don't know what's going on. I love this. I love this. So let's take a look at our, um, dictionary. So those of you who are just joining, hello. Um, but we have Naver Dictionary. Let's take a look at that. And type in Seye. It is free. It is a Korean to English, uh, dictionary that you can use. So let's type in Seye since we had a bunch of different answers. And it is first or most or day of ancestral ritual? Sure, the first versus the second, third, etc., etc. So we can think of this as just, um, ooh, what the heck? Okay. Most, oops. Or something like being the best? I just saw a message. Oh, okay, nevermind. Um, so I'll think of it as that. Sure, question mark? Alright, Adu. Adu, nice. Again, for my seventeen fans out there. Adu. Nah, I had this song stuck in my head. It's Adu Nice. Adus, everyone knew that one. I see a bunch of comments for that. Very, very nice, very. Last one. Akka? Akka? Now I'm singing it too. Look, whoever said K-pop doesn't help you learn Korean, they're wrong, obviously. Uh, so these are from topicguy.com. It's, uh, you can download their pass test for free. Akka, earlier, yeah. Very good. You guys are almost at fifty K. Highly doubt we can get to two K shares. I don't know why it doesn't show you like does it do like a point, one point one if it's like a thousand, a hundred? I don't know. I don't know. Thank you so much. Thank you so much Oh it does okay I I I would not know it's it's it would say okay If it reached that it would say one point one K okay oh it says that on your end Mine must be frozen oh no okay So I like mountains therefore I do climb Often do climb The most very climb Or earlier climb One two three or four which one sounds better So I do one often Preparing for math tomorrow I mean hello Fifty K we did it you guys did it Awesome job guy like What And before it hit ten o'clock what Thank you so much for sharing the live and for following I'm skipping gym tomorrow okay cool I'm down for that so we're going with one everyone's good on that Therefore I Hike Often Star thank you for the roses thank you guys everyone who sent gifts thank you so so much Maybe with all the gifts that I get I can get a webcam for sure That'd be nice so I can have a new setup here going on Any questions on that oh Sia Am I saying that right thank you so much for the roses If I say if I'm saying that wrong I apologize I'm horrible with names See okay good 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 cheese duck thank you so much Emily thank you for the finger heart Alright if we're ready to move on to thirty nine put an apple emoji down below Those of you who have been here before you already know what I'm about to do Cuz you know I love to do it So some just means points So it's worth two points Insert apple emoji Atu hamnida right yes Oh tattoo yeah wait look Where you messed me up It's crazy though they're both similar it's just one Character off I just noticed that okay So we're all ready for thirty nine wonderful that we're going to do Tomorrow Big apple Medical exercise go ahead Tia We're actually wrapping up so no Tool you guys love it when I do that I'm like are you guys ready? Are you guys ready or I didn't get a notification no angel hello Um so thirty nine and forty part of forty we're going to do tomorrow if we can Yes Um I just got here no I know we have gone over some things already we did two questions today Uh we made it to past fifty K as well we're at Fifty three and I can't remember forty was my highs or fifty was but Either way we made it past my record this is me clapping By the way Um but yeah so tomorrow we'll do this again those of you who are new Be sure to look at my page by clicking here if you go on my link There's an option for a variety of things such as my discord if you're interested in joining that My public discord is linked here all you gotta do is tap on this If you're interested in following my Instagram I don't post there Much but if you just wanna follow to send me messages or something then go to my Instagram Heart me wise guy thank you so much for that I appreciate it This is my YouTube channel for those of you who are in a different time zone and can't stay the whole time I recommend subscribing to my YouTube channel so that way you can get Catch my lives later or get my lives later on after I post them And if you just want to support me any of these would do um Kofi Has a specific goal that I'm going for which is to get Upgrade my equipment so that way I can have like a webcam and like an extra monitor for you guys So you can see my face while we do these lives and such um so my goal is three hundred I think I This says nine percent Um so far but if you're interested in supporting me with that You you can buy me a book it's not loading for some reason but You can donate to that as well if you'd like But again all that is linked here if you guys are interested Oh and let me take a screenshot so that way Thank you for all those who broke your fingers today The link is not working okay let me fix that Um if any questions pop up I hope Someone in the chat can answer you While I do this real quick If it's not working um also anyone who's in my discord if you wouldn't mind Copying and pasting the invite link in the Chat for me as well so people can just copy and paste it to Their browser So I'm just gonna update my discord link real quick for those of you who are wanting to join It's my Kofi There we go So these are your options here Alright so I just Made changes the changes are uploading now So you should be able to click on my discord And then it'll ask you to Tap to learn Okay so my discord is here Oh this is study buddy chat So if you join the discord your name should show up here Yes it was nice having you here those of you who are new Hello be sure to follow so I am going live tomorrow as well Okay so it is working okay cool Good turn up Good turn now Say hello to your beautiful faces hello Emily Any other questions? You start your job congratulations I hope You like it like you end up liking it and that the people are cool You're very welcome those of you who have to go and catch some rest Zairzayo those of you whose day is just starting And of course as always You worked very hard Oh you had to work with your besties oh that's perfect You're very welcome star Any other questions everyone good? If so you are dismissed If you have any questions though just let me know Let me see if I can go back You're very welcome do you speak any other languages? Not fluently but I do know like Spanish and sign language Um I'm currently learning Vietnamese so Korean has had to take a back burner for A little bit while I learned Vietnamese Bye star enjoy your night as well see some of you guys in the discord later But yes those of you whose time zone might be a little different Might be hard to join please subscribe to the YouTube channel TikTok you guys are already here for that Instagram is here and so is discord And then if you wanna support Venmo is an option Kofi Um my digital products are in here If there's any of you who are interested in that let me know But I do have a digital planner printable one and a digital one And then I also have free vocab sheets so if you wanna sign up for that You do have to sign up for the newsletter join the email list in order to get the vocab sheets but then that That's free and then my Kofi is here With the ninety seven other supporters so I appreciate that too In the past Toya nice to meet you Alright I'll wrap it up then take care guys Oh let me screenshot too There we go Bye bye I need a study buddy See y'all on discord okay see you later